I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for joining us at our town council meeting today, June 15th. Brenda, would you help us with the roll call? Or Suzie?
Angie Farner?
Here.
Brandy Bastin? Bill Neumeyer?
Here.
Chris Lidle?
Here.
And Clint Budsoe?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. First item on our agenda this evening is consideration of the minutes from our meeting of June the first as presented in your backup materials. Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
One second then.
Are there any comments, proposed changes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the minutes are approved. We'll move on to new agenda items and the first item under that heading is Girl Scout Troop 1094. Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Lucy and these are my friends.
Anna.
Allison.
Hillary.
Carla.
Grace.
Betsy.
We are from Girl Scout Troop 1094 representing New Palestine Air Radio School and Fortuna Academy.
Over the past two years, we have worked to earn the Girl Scout Bronze Award, the highest award a Girl Scout junior can earn.
We collected clean and sorted over 400 pounds of plastic bottle caps they'd lit, many of which would have ended up in landfills. We then partnered with Green Tree Plastics and Everville to turn our caps into these recycled plastic collections.
We raised money for the project through the sale of broke up and through generous donations including others.
Smartly would like to present the wishes to the town for use in our community as an outreach before we get out of doors. We are also arranging to have partners work on the benches to acknowledge our donation.
We would like to thank the town of New Palestine for partnering with us on this project as well as everyone who donated cash for caps or bought Girl Scouts. Thank you.
Well, congratulations and thank you very much. And would each of you please come forward and we have a pin with a town seal for each of you. So congratulations and good job. And there's a town pin. Thank you very much. And thank you for your hard work on the benches.
They look really nice.
Thank you.
For this, this is the bench. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And we will make sure that the benches are displayed with pride. And thank you very much. How about one more round of applause? Thank you. Next on our agenda is consideration of ordinance number 061522 and ordinance amending notice provisions. And Jim, do you have the information regarding that?
I'm sorry, I was gonna get, I didn't, I wasn't listening to you, Bill. I was getting ready to text her to send me a picture because the reporters wanting to do some summer stories, so.
Okay.
I apologize. What was the question?
Oh, no, I was just asking if you had the background information regarding the notice provisions amendment?
Yes, yes. It came unfavorable.
Okay, so we don't need to consider that?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is consideration of the makeup of the redevelopment commission. And I know there was a question at a prior meeting, just to assure, by statute, the redevelopment commission needs to be made up of five members, three of whom are appointed by the council and two of which are appointed by the president of the council. And Brenda or Suzie, do you, do you have the list of?
That's backwards, Bill.
Okay.
Three members by the president.
Three by the president. See, I wasn't trying to usurp authority.
Dyslexic or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll gladly share with the council. Do we have a list of the members and who they were appointed by?
Yes, I do have that by my memory. Okay, we do have it, so. I have it where, I know where.
Is it in the planning commission minutes?
Wouldn't be in the plan commission minutes because it's.
It's in the RDC. Let me get it.
Different commission. No, no, we want to make sure we're correct, so. I'll tell you.
She gave it to us at the last meeting and I didn't.
Isn't it better that I'm actually here instead of this camera where I speak about 30 seconds after?
Actually, the camera, when it froze, it kind of made for a little bit of entertainment. No, we certainly appreciate the extra effort when you're on vacation.
I just have to take the daughter up to internship and manage.
Very nice.
I have Steve Rainey, Rachel Strong, Mark Looney, you, Russell Smathers.
Okay, Steve Rainey, me, Russell Smathers, Rachel Strong.
Mark Looney.
And Mark Looney. Okay, but those are the five. I think we had somewhere that showed who were the three appointments.
We had, if you're asking like Clint Budsoe voted, or Rachel Strong, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Recommended and Jan Jorsen recommended Mark Looney.
Okay.
And David Book recommended Steve Rainey. And Bill was, you voted, recommended Russell Smathers. And Lisa Landtrip with vice staff.
Okay, well, then.
Yours was the presidential.
Okay, so how about this, just for 100% clarity? It looks like we have five members, three need to be appointed by the president of the town council and the other two by the council.
Yeah.
So I am going to make a motion as the presidential appointments, Rachel Strong, Mark Looney, and myself. Is there a, and I don't know if it's a presidential appointment, I don't think we need a vote or anything like that, so.
Why don't you just keep Russell because you can do the Russells?
Then we have too many presidential appointments.
Russell has to be done by the council then, right?
It would be Russell and Steve Rainey, again, just for clarification and so that we comply with the statute.
Well, there's three for you to do.
And I did.
You said Rachel, Mark.
And me.
You're recommending yourself?
Yes, because I'm afraid you won't appoint me.
You'd be correct, Bill. I would not.
So yes, I think there's no conflict of interest. That is a proper appointment, so those were my appointments. We probably should have a motion though for the council.
Wait, hang on, because I'm tired and my thought process is lagging. So, but if you already did Russell and that was this year's, is that right? Was it this year's appointment or last year's?
No, it would have been a year ago.
Last year's, okay.
So, and once we make these appointments on the record, we'll have good records. They serve for one-year terms, but, and that's effective January 1, we're just clarifying the composition. The saving grace is each member serves until their successor is appointed and sworn, so we don't have to do this once a year. We're just making crystal clear that we're compliant with the statute.
Can the president appoint himself?
Yes.
Where's that? Where would I find that at?
It's by negative implication. If he shows something that says I can't.
I would like to have that information in front of me. I don't want to.
I have.
You're asking us to make it compliant, so how do we know that?
I just want you to appoint two. Because I, in my opinion, in my discretion, I can appoint three. So I did. But I do think as.
I would like to wait until Ted's present. I would like to have him just to make sure that we're doing it and being compliant.
Well, I've appointed my three. And we can always revisit this every meeting if we would like.
Well, we can revisit it the next meeting when Ted's here then.
Sure, we sure can.
All right.
But even in light of that, I'm going to make a motion that the council appoint, because I am a council member, that the council appoint Steve Rainey and Russell Smathers to the redevelopment commission.
One second then.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second, so it's open for discussion. Any discussion regarding that motion?
I definitely feel like we should keep them all there.
Yep, absolutely. We're happy that folks are willing to serve. Any other questions, comments?
Not the best yet.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and at least we have clarified the composition of the redevelopment commission so that we 100% comply with the statute.
I think that I probably would have been better educated if I had known that there was a meeting last week with the RDC that you guys were learning what they can and can't do.
Yeah.
I didn't know anything about that meeting, but I would have attended it.
It was published and boasted at the news.
Well, normally I get emails like from town hall saying, hey, there's an RDC meeting they're going to be talking about.
I suggested that from the beginning that the town council get emails for every single meeting.
Not a bad idea.
Every commission, every, if you have a hot dog eating contest or anything.
Any town function.
Any town function.
Or anything that's pertaining to the town or changes that are coming into the town, I think that we should make.
Clint, can I ask that you make that a motion? I think that's a wonderful item, so much so we should make it a formal vote.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the town council's notified of any meetings that are part of any board of the town or any training for the town.
And I'll go so far, if I can add to your motion with your permission, that if there is any business or matters that pertain to town, and I'll go so far as to say, let's say that the Girl Scouts came in and they wanted to use the public assembly room for a meeting, and if that was approved, I think the council should get notice of public events or meetings just so that if there's any interest in attending, at least we'll know about them. Is that a fair?
Well, that'd be good except for we're not renting that room or we're not.
You know, as soon as I said it, I kind of wanted to take that part back because with COVID, the room is closed.
So you lost me there, Bill.
Well, forget that part of the motion there, Clint. Just meetings of boards, commissions, or anything that affects time business.
Okay, sounds good.
Is there a second to Clint's motion?
One second then.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and at least now that's officially in the minutes and I think that's a fantastic idea. Yeah, we'll bring that up to the next meeting.
Did you attend the RDC meeting?
No, I'm looking up online.
The statute, and by statute, it has to be the school superintendent or her designee. So she is a non-voting member, so.
That's Landry, right?
And that, yes, Dr. Landry, and that's by statute. So if we would add that into the minutes that there's a non-voting member of the RDC and that is the school superintendent, Dr. Lisa Landry. Thank you, Bob. That's an absolutely great point. Move on to new business and the first item under this heading is Commonwealth. And Jim, is that, are you presenting that?
Uh, let's see there.
Steve or anybody here from Commonwealth?
Is this the MS4 or no?
Yes, the first one is, well, actually both of them are MS4.
Yes.
There's nothing.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't know that was on there because they had asked to come, but they sent me the information yesterday and I told them that wasn't timed up to get to the council, so.
Do you want to?
Table that to the next.
Table that item and then we'll also have a representative from Commonwealth who can present that. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table items 5.1 and 5.2 regarding information from Commonwealth. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling these two items to our next meeting, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries and then we'll have a representative that can present the information. We'll move right into department reports and any Vons' absence, is Suzie or Brenda or who wants the?
We have nothing.
Perfect.
There ain't class, we're getting along a lot.
All right. Steve, what would you like, you have anything you'd like to share this evening?
Oh, I could hit on a couple quick topics. The K crossing was awarded to Globe. They don't have a timetable yet. Everybody's just so swamped and busy. I just said, two days you can't have it or for the time period you can't have it or during street fest, which would be the 24th and 25th of this month and there's no way they could come to it next week anyway. And on that subject, I've been lining up all the barricades the town needs to do the closure on 52. Obviously, we don't have enough inventory to do. The main closure was on 52 and even all the little side roads. As far as roundabout, we're just waiting. We didn't close out that contract at the end of May. We're waiting, we need to have show 70% grass down there in our right of way to close that out, so. So I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Yeah, a couple things. On our July 20th meeting, Commonwealth will be here as well. They'll be giving the presentation on the preliminary engineering report with wastewater. So I have this in PDF. I'll get it to council, so you guys have plenty of time to look at it. Shank broom, the air conditioning went out on it, so we've got that. We're waiting on some parts and so once we get that, we'll get that fixed. It was fairly expensive. I think it was the condenser or, you know, it was a big one. I think it was like $4,000 for that air conditioning. And so the museum air conditioning went out, but we were able to get that fixed with Hunter Heating and Cooling. It was more of electrical and a few other little lights and then.
Hang on that air conditioning, was that the one that got replaced from our insurance?
I think that was this one.
This one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then tomorrow we have that tech, little tech meeting with Lennar Homes before we run that through the planning commission, if anybody can pin that.
And what time is that?
10:30 to 11:00. 10:30 to 11:00, yeah, tomorrow, 10:30 to 11:00, yep. And the only other thing I got is a little fun thing here about, I'm asking some shirts. I'm getting a couple bids on some shirts with our town logo on it, so that way if we ever go together as a group or golf outing or whatever.
That is not.
So hopefully next meeting I'll have bids on a couple of them and we'll go from there. One other thing, a golf outing. The chamber is doing a golf outing this year and, you know, generally we participate. I don't know if there's anybody that has some interest, but.
Do you know when it is?
You know, that day. The golf outing.
It's the 13th, I think, of July, 13th, 14th of July.
Only 13th. We're just looking for four golfers. Hopefully the heat's not 90 degrees, 100 degrees. But I know Brenda likes to golf, right? Yeah. Bill, you like to golf. Anybody else like to golf? Angie, you like to golf?
I don't have the temperament for it.
Okay, so sign me up.
Well, yeah, I'll get it filled out. We'll make sure we get it paid for and we'll kind of leave it loose and if we can get four people, great, so.
If you find someone else, great, but if not, I'll definitely jump in there.
It's generally a, you know, fun event, so.
Sure, well, and ask Trent, I think he.
Yeah.
Doesn't like a left-handed golfer.
Yeah. Fair enough. That's all I got, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Bob?
We've been real busy lately, so trying to catch up with some stuff in the office. We're about due to start looking at new squad cards for next year, so I'll start getting quotes and see where we're at. Usually it's all state bid, but right now nobody knows who has state bid, so we're kind of on hold for that. I know I need one, possibly two, and I think we may have it, I know we're going to have budget beans again, so we're going to have to see if we can squeak another one in. I've got a 2015 that's getting band-aided up a lot, so it's about kind of pissed out. I know what it said, budget means, have we said anything or heard anything at all?
Not yet.
Problem might be for that.
I think Yvonne's in charge of that or just getting it.
Yeah, I've been kind of watching my fuel budget. It's above the budget high last year, so we have plenty and it's going to be tight, so heads up.
Okay, thank you. At this time, on the agenda, our public comments, so if there's anybody in the public that would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address and share with us anything you'd like to share.
Make a comment. Yeah, why, for 462, South 600 West. Since I'm usually on the other side, I did want to thank both for both the planning commission and you all for the action taken on the mailing. I think that it was the right action taken by both, both the community and the council, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Scott, you got something?
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, I was. Two big things. I would like the town to consider, first of all, is beginning to use an hyen.gov internet domain. I'm not quite sure where the town of New Palestine.org used to came from. But then being said, a lot of agencies are already and continue to be more aggressive about stalking, communicating with agencies that don't have official email addresses from hyen.gov domains, so that might be a challenge in the future. In addition to that, of course, there's a tad bit more official, as well as the state offers some benefits, primarily training and a little cybersecurity stuff at no cost. So there's a few benefits that come along with making that transition.
And what kind of a change or, I mean, is that an easy switch?
Yes, so. Yes, so we'll get that registered primarily for email, and we can do websites and time or we're not, that's up to you guys. Primary for email, we'll just get it registered and add it, so whatever your current email address for the town is, it'll continue to work. You also have a newpalestine.gov.
Okay. I mean, that's something we.
We could do newpalestine.gov if the state would approve it.
Let's do that.
That's probably not taken.
It's not the official name of the government unit, they may reject it, but I'll try.
Okay, well, that one sounds pretty straightforward. Do we want to make a motion to switch to the IN.gov domain?
I make a motion that we switch to the IN.gov domain.
Second then.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments, discussion, questions regarding that, because it certainly makes sense and?
Kind of have to. We'll just keep being able to do stuff.
Yeah. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, and Scott, do whatever we need to do to make that switch.
Okay, great. Second item that I was wanting to bring to your attention is the town server, that's right back there in the closet. I would like to replace it with a different piece of hardware that will be a little bit more redundant, as well as support virtualizing the server that all the applications that town hall users run on. That's not the case today. The benefit is that if we do end up having a disaster happen here in the building, it makes it much easier, quicker, and less expensive to recover. So, recovering today-to-day is not particularly tough, it will take several hours to rebuild a machine and get it running. If we virtualize it, I can basically download an image of that virtual machine and run it almost anywhere. So, the benefit is that it will also allow us to run another virtual machine on site that helps do monitoring of all the technology.
So, does that mean we would buy a new server?
Yes.
And do you have any quotes or estimates of what that might cost?
I will advise Jim to quote in the very near future, I just want to bring it to your attention that it will be coming and that's some of the reason behind it.
Okay, certainly appreciate the information, and if you get a couple estimates, and most importantly, your recommendation, and then we'll act on it pretty quickly so that, you know, if there are upgrades that need to be made, we can get them made.
He did say that Bob's computer was outdated, so he.
Yeah, so the computer that's running as a server in there is actually the same PC that Mina and Brenda have, the reserve officer have. It's just another desktop computer, so as a bit of an extra benefit, I would also suggest we take that computer and give it to Bob, because his is the coolest and by far the most horrible performing computer in town.
Okay.
Why didn't you say anything?
I thought it was me that was a little slow.
You don't want to do, you don't want to borrow your computer. Oh, no, I would look back.
Apparently, it's not user-bodied, and that, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shouldn't you have a fast-running computer? You shouldn't be working off of the slowest one.
I guess I don't know.
Well, we'll get you an upgrade and.
I appreciate it. The old man's just gotten used to the old stuff.
Next on our agenda, our council comments, I'll just start to my far left. Clint, you have anything you'd like to add this evening? Chris?
I'm actually good to add.
I have nothing to add. Angie, do you have anything you'd like to add? Then let's move to my favorite part of the agenda, consideration of the claims. And tonight, we are requested to consider APV numbers 24020 through 24081. And there's a breakdown. Today's date, town meeting APVs, wastewater and stormwater APV numbers 24022-24079. Payroll claims dated June the 10th, and those are APV numbers 24048 through 24053, and payroll deduction checks dated June 10th numbered 24054 through 24057. Is there a motion regarding those claims as presented in your backup materials?
Make a motion to approve 24020 through 24081.
I'll second that motion, and that way, we have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion. Are there any questions, comments, corrections, concerns regarding any of the claims as presented? All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, please indicate by saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, and the claims as presented are approved. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Clint made the motion, Angie seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye? Aye? We are adjourned, and thank you very much.